Today is Monday, January the 9th, and the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are now in session. We welcome everyone to the boardroom, and at this time, we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge, so if everyone would be so kind as to stand, and Commissioner Green will listen to prayer, and Commissioner Brown will listen to pledge of the flag. Commissioner Green?
Let's pray. Fathers, we come to you this evening as humble as we know how. We thank you for your blessings upon us and upon this county, where we live and where we enjoy raising our families. Father, we just pray that you'd help us tonight as commissioners to do that that's right for all people in this county. Bless us tonight and protect this nation, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Face flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, gentlemen, we have before us our December 5th regular session minutes. What's the pleasure of the board concerning the minutes?
Motion to approve minutes.
Okay, we have a motion of a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those that favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed like sign. Gentlemen, we have our agenda for tonight before you. Are there any additions or deletions to our agenda for tonight's meeting? There being none, what's the pleasure of the board concerning the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Discussion. All those that favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed like sign. At this time, we'll move to our first item on our appointment schedule, and we're honored to have some very famous people with us in the room tonight. We have with us, gentlemen, Ms. McDowell High School. We have Ms. Titan and Mr. McDowell High School. So at this time, I would like to ask all of y'all to come over here to the podium, and if somebody with you that's the instructor sponsor, okay, come on up to the front then. And we welcome you to the boardroom, and just give the board a little bit of background about how you achieved this great success and this great honor you have achieved. So go ahead, and the floor is yours.
Okay, well, I'm Hannah Kaler. I'm a science teacher at McDowell High School and the director of the Ms. McDowell High School and Ms. Titan Scholarship Pageant, so I represent these two wonderful young ladies. Caitlin Hilton is our current Ms. McDowell High School, representing this school year, and Piper Stiles is our Ms. Titan, also representing this current school year. And I am also here to represent our brand-new Ms. McDowell High School, and Allison Garrett, who is one of our CTE teachers, is over that program, but I'll let him tell you more about what they've done. But as far as the Ms. McDowell High School program, this was started two years ago, so this is our second year that we've had Queens. It is a scholarship program that we are able to offer scholarships to two young ladies at McDowell High School. They do not have to be in a certain grade to win the pageant. They compete in several areas of competition, including a personal interview, which is very rigorous, similar to what you would see a Miss America contestant go through. They also have to compete in school spirit wear onstage, which is their own personal interpretation of school spirit. They have to compete in the evening gown, which is the elegant portion of the evening, an onstage question. And then the contestants that are choosing to compete for Ms. McDowell High School also have to compete with a talent presentation. So these young ladies went through all of that, and at the end of the evening, they were chosen by our panel of judges to represent our school this year, and both will receive a scholarship when they graduate. And Caitlin is a senior, so she'll get hers in June, and Piper is a freshman, so she's got a few years till she gets her scholarship. But the interesting thing is, this program was really just started to provide another scholarship opportunity for our high school students in McDowell County. But I have a lot of connections in the Miss America program, and we had a lot of great visitors here this year at our pageant, including the current Ms. North Carolina, Mackenzie Faggard. They were all very impressed with the caliber of students that we have at McDowell High School. They were impressed with our two new winners, impressed so much that right after the pageant, we received invitation for both young ladies to come compete for the title of Ms. North Carolina and Ms. North Carolina's outstanding teen in June. So we have been processing all of that information, getting the paperwork together, and they unfortunately cannot just go compete representing their high school, and that's just the Miss America rule. They do have to represent a local franchised preliminary, a college, university, or a festival. So our only avenue of getting there is to represent a festival. And graciously, the city council, Freddie Killow, has all approved that they are going to represent the Mountain Glory Festival. So we are getting all that paperwork processed, so very soon, their titles are going to change. They will still be Ms. McDowell High School and Ms. Titan, but Caitlin will become Ms. Mountain Glory, and Piper will become Ms. Mountain Glory's outstanding teen, and they will spend a week in June, this summer, competing for Ms. North Carolina and Ms. North Carolina's outstanding teen, which could give them thousands of more dollars in scholarship money. So we're very excited about that.
Wonderful, wonderful. So what was your, okay, what was your talent? What did you do for your talent?
My talent was dance.
Really? All right. Good deal. Questions, guys?
What about each of you? I'd like to hear what you, you know, a little bit about your goals and ambitions in life.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Hilton. I'm here at Ms. McDowell High School, 2016. One of my biggest goals is to get the arts back into schools. So my platform is focused around theater arts and how it empowers young children and can actually teach them a lot to do with school and things like that. So I, my goal is to get a theater program into the elementary schools in McDowell County. And I hope to do that with this year as my title and going into Ms. North Carolina. So that is one of my biggest goals. We are also currently mentoring a group of girls at Glenwood Elementary, and we have started working with them about confidence, and that is a really big thing that children lack these days. And these young girls are, they don't have a lot of self-esteem, so we are really helping them with that, and it just, it warms my heart to see these girls reacting the way that they are, and they're doing a great job. So I'm very excited to represent McDowell County, even in Raleigh, and yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Piper Stiles. I am Ms. Titan, 2016, and my platform is to raise awareness and money for the Alzheimer's Association. Alzheimer's is a hereditary disease that runs in my family, and that means most likely one day I will probably have Alzheimer's. And so I participate in the Alzheimer's Walks in Asheville and give them the money I've raised through the year. And I volunteer at Autumn Care and help the activity directors with anything they need, so they give me things to do. I paint nails, just go visit with patients, or I've helped with the Ms. Autumn Care Pageant, which was a lot of fun, to see them dressed up and in makeup, since they don't get to do that. And I also help them with their book work and everything they need to do. And I just hope that we can find a cure for Alzheimer's, so that's why this is a good thing.
And I will say on her behalf, this year, she's going to miss the Alzheimer's Walk in Asheville, because we'll be in Raleigh when it takes place. So I've encouraged her to talk to gentlemen like you and other people in this county of influence and start an Alzheimer's Walk for McDowell County, because we don't have anything in this area that raises awareness for that specific hereditary disease. We, you know, we have a lot of support for relief for life, but there's nothing here for Alzheimer's and many other things, but something that I hope she'll do during her year.
Let me just start off by saying, Mr. McDowell, if you weren't there, you missed out on a great afternoon. And it's crazy, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the fact that-
It was all over Facebook.
Yeah. People showing me pictures everywhere, but I don't really feel that much different. I wasn't going into it really trying to win, honestly. It was, I mean, this is my second year doing it, second year that it's ever happened, but Tara White was my gym teacher back in Nevo Elementary, but I just thought, you know, it's a good thing to do for the community, and it raises a lot of awareness to strengthen our community up, you know, helping people out. I think we raised over $8,000. We had a bunch of high school kids, that's pretty, especially high school boys.
Y'all did great.
It's pretty impressive, so, but I was very joy to take a part in it.
Dakota, what's your plans when you move on to the next level?
I've been accepted to a few colleges, made my parents proud. I'm thinking I'm going to study engineering. I think that's what I want to do, technical engineer, you know, sounds like something I can, hands-on stuff. I don't want to-
Well, we wish you the very best as you go-
Oh, thank you, yeah.
-through your goals, all three of you. That's wonderful, what you're doing. And I was sitting here listening to the ladies speak, and I think, I love the concept of the self-confidence aspect component and you're tying it in with specific like Alzheimer's and what you want to do there, and I think it's great, and I'm personally going to talk to y'all about getting you to come to our church and to talk to our girls. I think it'd be good to have y'all, and that might be something y'all want to think about going out to churches too, and encouraging kids, these girls, and guys too. Of course, Dawson was one of my kids in my youth group, so-
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Where do you go to church at?
Zineal.
Zineal?
Yeah. Now, when you get your engineering degree, they're hiring engineers in this county like crazy. So don't forget about McDowell County, because they will hire engineers.
I like McDowell County. Every time I go to Asheville, I'm stressed out, too many people on the roads, people down there, people down there usually, some of them jerks, but I like McDowell.
Well, we've got to present a few things to you guys, okay?
All right.
So we are on a timed schedule. We'd love to have y'all, we would love to just sit and chat all night with y'all, because we love kids, we love teachers, where we, y'all got 100% what you're doing. So let's go ahead and start with Ms. Caitlin Hilton. Caitlin, this is from the county of McDowell, North Carolina. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Caitlin Hilton and recognition as Ms. McDowell High School, 2016, by the McDowell County Board of Commissioners, this ninth day of January 2017. We appreciate your accomplishment. You did great. Thank you so much. This is you.
David, can we get a picture?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. We'll have the official presentation here. Okay, thank you, Caitlin. There you go. All right, we have Piper Stiles. Piper, from the McDowell County Board of Commissioners, we're going to present to you the certificate of recognition as you have accomplished great things, became Ms. Titan 2016. So on behalf of our board, these gentlemen right here, we want to congratulate you and say, "A job well done." Let's smile. And last but not least, Mr. Merrill, come over here, sir. Let's get you over here now. You've heard me say this already, but this is to congratulate you on your achievement, and it was a real show. I was not there, but I saw clips of it, and it was great, great entertainment. So this is from our board, just recognizing your achievement, okay?
Yes, sir.
There you go, sir. Thanks, y'all, we appreciate it. Hey, we all do great things now, okay? Great things. Okay, at this time, we'll move to our next item on our appointment schedule, administrative items. Mr. Wooten, go ahead and certainly lead us out.
Yes, sir. Wanted to start off, we had one Nevo Water System water leak adjustment. These happen every once in a while with faulty pipes or meter connections, that sort of thing, and so it's fairly routine, we'd ask for you to approve it.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All those that favor the motion say aye. Aye and opposed like sign. Okay, great. Go ahead, Mr. Wooten.
The next item, we have about eight budget amendments, and I'll go through, and if you have any questions, any hard questions, I might go ask our finance officer to come in, but they're fairly straightforward. GF-22 transfers donated revenue to the education line item and cooperative extension. GF-23 transfer taxable poll worker pay to the salary line item from election expense. GF-24 allocates grants revenues and other funds in emergency services. Some of that is related to the fire that was fault a couple of weeks ago. GF-25 appropriates fund balance due to roof repairs and to transfer between line items. I was going to mention on this one, we had some roof repairs that were done at the Health Department facility, and we received insurance money back that covered that cost, and so that's what a good chunk of that is. A much larger chunk has to do with in our building and grounds line item. We have had a really tough year when it comes to roofs, heat pumps, et cetera, et cetera, as far as just things that we try very hard to anticipate, but sometimes we just have a bad year. And we've had a pretty significant year when it comes to those type repairs. So, I mean, I could spend five or 10 minutes on all the things that we've been doing to show you a printout that's a mile long, but when you have more buildings, it just goes with the territory, you have a lot to maintain. So our staff does a great job, and we try to stay on top of the smallest little leak, you know, we try to take care of as soon as we can. GF-26 is in our Public Works Department, just doing a, get the right language there, appropriates fund balance due to convenience site paving and donated revenue. We appropriated funds in last year's budget for paving, didn't do the paving then, so we just carried it over to this year. GF-28 appropriates grant revenue for the ECU training grant, which you'll hear about in a few minutes. GF-29 appropriates additional revenue and transfer between line items. And then the last one is the 911 Fund, appropriates fund balance and transfers between line items and the 911 Fund, and that is primarily related to the backup 911 center for the work that is happening in that facility, get that up and going. So any questions about any of those amendments?
There being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve GF-22 through GF-29 and 911 F1 budget amendments, as presented.
Okay, we have second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye and opposed like sign. Okay.
That's all we had on our administrative items. We do have the monthly budget reports, and I know Chairman Walker had asked earlier how we're doing sales tax, for example. I mentioned our two primary, our primary is the Article 39, which is the one cent, and we're about where we would anticipate to be in that fund. And our Article 40 and Article 42 are about where they end up. We have a new sales tax that we've talked about the last year, legislature instituted last legislative session. That fund is looking very good at this point, and so we'll keep an eye on it, and that one is restricted to economic development and education expenditure, so we always like it when that number's in the black, of course. Any questions about anything budget-related? Mentioned last month and in your memos that we've started to do some preparation for next year's budget. We're in a new calendar year, but, you know, our budget process will really kick off, really in February, it'll really get more involved for staff, and March will be when we meet with department heads and sort of thing, but as you know, it'll take a lot of time and preparation and effort, but it's why we're here. There's no questions, that's all I had under admin items.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wooten. Let's move down to old businesses we're ahead of schedule, and let's go to our item B. This will be the Legislative Goals Review, and Commissioner Green is our voting delegate to that, and he asked that the board agree and just approve the goals. Is there any, did any board member have any issue within the goals as they were presented? Okay. Okay, then, there you go. So we appreciate you being concerned and bringing that to the board. Let's move to our next item under old business, item C, and this would be one item. We have our Nursing Home Adult Care Committee, we have one applicant, and this is the first reading, so we always take action on the second reading unless there's a emergency-type situation. So this is the first reading, and we'll, again, look at this next minute. So with that being said, let's move to item A under new business, and this is the disposal of property. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, certainly lead us out.
Yes, sir. We had a call from Waylon Prebor, the director of the Senior Center, about a month ago, and it was after the December meeting, and when their facility was constructed about 15 years ago, they, you know, the architect went through and they, you know, planned the kitchen, the layout, serving line, et cetera, and so they would pick equipment that would fit that layout. And one of the items they purchased at that time is a milk cooler, much like you would see in your, in your school setting, and from what Mr. Prebor has told me, they stopped using it about two weeks after they moved into the facility. It was not really accessible for the population they serve, and so it's really just been unplugged and kind of in the way. We tried, I think, numerous times to sell it through the different means we have available, and just without any success. It's not like selling a used car or even a table, it's something very specific that only certain people would want to use it for. So what we're asking, we've contacted the school system just to ask if they would have a need and interest, and they do, so you're allowed to transfer without compensation to another governmental entity without any hesitation, but the only stipulation is that we have to post the possibility, I guess, beforehand. It's a little different than what we do for typical sale. Typically, if we're selling a piece of property or something like that, you would authorize staff to then post the sale afterwards. This is a little bit different. You're required to post it beforehand. I don't know why they did it like that with the transfer, but staff did take the liberty of posting the possible intent, just to save some time, which we've done, and the notice is in your packet. So staff is requesting the transfer. Again, we've made effort to try to sell it and recoup that money and weren't successful, and it's just taken up space, so the schools could use it and would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. I'll just add one comment, that we are partners with those guys on the school board and ladies, and if it's going to meet their needs and help our kids out, and there's a legal way to do it, the board's going to do it, so. What's the pleasure, all in favor of the motion say aye. Aye and opposed like sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move to item B under new business. This will be tax matters, releases, reveals, any comments or questions for staff?
Motion to approve releases, reveals.
Okay, we have second.
Second.
Discussion. All those that favor the motion say aye. Aye and opposed like sign. At this time, we'll have a recess, because we are up to our next appointment, which would be a 5:30 appointment, and we're slightly ahead of schedule, and we've accomplished old and new business. After a brief recess, the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are back in session. At this time, we'll move to reports, communications. Mr. Wooten, go ahead, certainly lead us out.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to, while we had a moment, just acknowledge, we have just been through the Christmas and New Year holiday, and we definitely, employees appreciate the break that we're granted, but wanted to, for the record, state how, the day after Christmas especially, how hard a lot of our public works, staff worked. I've joked before that we all, and I'm not going to say people, I'm going to say we, including myself, the day after Christmas, everybody wants to get wrapping paper and boxes and everything out, out of their house, you know, because it's-
My wife did.
...taking up space. So there's always been this understanding going back years and years that the day after Christmas, unless this is Sunday, you're going to have to be open to get that rush taken care of. And so got a new Public Works Director, and he understood that, of course, and should note that that was a holiday for most of the other staff, administrative staff, so I hope the public understood and were accepting of the lines and the crowd, and didn't hear too many issues, so thanks to the staff for that. Also, as of this weekend, we had the winter storm, obviously. I commented in some of your notes that you received, that a lot of preparation, I think over-preparing sometimes is what you want to do, just in case things turn out to be worse than they actually are. Our emergency services staff especially were on top of this, constant communication with NCDeGoT, Highway Patrol, State of North Carolina, and others, to make sure any response was adequate and responsible. So we had, I think, five to eight inches across the county of snow, very little incidents. Thankfully, the public did a great job of, you know, respecting a lot of the warnings and requests to stay off the road, and that's appreciated, but the staff just did a fantastic job. Maintenance staff have been out cleaning sidewalks and parking lots over the weekend that we don't necessarily see, but they've been working hard, and so they're appreciated. Any of the staff that went above and beyond what we normally do is-
DSS staff with the public shelters reopened did a great job, too.
So it's definitely appreciated by us here and hopefully by the public that, you know, a lot of thought goes into preparing for the worst, because that's, that's our job, their job, so great job. And if you see staff that you know are working, please just, I'm sure a pat on the back verbally or literally is appreciated. Just a few more items to communicate to you. Next Monday, our offices will be closed for the Dr. Martin Luther King Holiday, and related to that, you have an invitation to the annual service at Addy's Chapel. I'll make sure I get the time right. And that will be at 11:00 a.m. next Monday, and Reverend Stephen Good will be the pastor, the speaker, this room Henderson, North Carolina. I will attend, and it's usually a very nice service, and I want to make sure I got that invitation to you. Any questions about any items I mentioned?
No, very thorough job, and as you said, Mr. Wooten, one of the biggest assets we have in McDowell County is our staff and our emergency service personnel. State workers did a great job, so we're very blessed with these people, and we appreciate what they do, and our county staff. At this time, we'll go ahead and move to our next item on the agenda. This is our annual audit presentation, and we have Kathy Axon with us tonight, and other staff members, too. So y'all come forward, ladies.
Hi, I'm Kathy Axon with Johnson Price Frinkle, and this is April Westmore, and she's the Senior Audit Manager in charge of her audit engagement. What she's just handed out to you is sort of a summary letter of everything that I would tell you if I were going to take a long time to go over the financial statements. Now, I never plan to take a long time, sometimes it goes a little longer than I planned. But anyway, we do appreciate the opportunity at JPS to be your service provider for your annual audit, and we really appreciate Mr. Wooten and Allison and all of the staff here. Speaking of your staff, we put them through a lot during the audit process. It's a hard thing to go through, to be audited, and everybody is extremely cooperative and makes it as easy as possible. I think you've already received a copy of the audit report electronically, is that right? And you've got a hard copy as well. When I talk about page numbers in this letter that we just passed out, that would be the page of the audit report itself, not the PDF page, if you've got an electronic page, so they'll be off a little bit, so watch for the page number at the bottom of the page. McDowell County is required to have an audit by state statute. You have to have an annual financial audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, because you, of the level of- Because you, of the level of federal and state funding you receive, you also have to have an audit in accordance with government auditing standards and with new guidance this year. We've always talked about the OMB circular A133 in the past, which was the federal funding audit standards guidance. And that has all been changed. This is the first year that you are audited under what they called for a while, you might have heard about the super circular or where that, it was a codification of all the federal audit standards and different purchasing and procurement standards that were all pulled into one document. And that's called Uniform Guidance is the short name for the Title II U.S. Code of Federal Regulations, Part 200 Uniform Administrative Requirements, Cost Principles, and Other Requirements for Federal Orders. Okay.
Say it again.
But anyway, that is the new guidance that, that you fall under because of the level of state and federal funding that you have. The audit report is laid out, we talk about this every year, as you look at it, and as you go through it and look at it, if you ever have any questions about anything, you can call us, please. We'll be glad to clarify anything that looks funny. There's a lot of information here, as you can see. But if you will look at the table of contents, which is actually five pages long, so that lets you know there's a lot of information here. That's first. And then the next thing after that is the independent auditor report. These two little three pages here, this is what you pay us for. The audit opinion is unmodified, which is the desired result of the audit process on the, on the financial statements themselves. Okay, after that, you have a section called Management's Discussion and Analysis. If I were you and we don't read anything else, I would read these pages because it basically summarizes most of the financial information that's in the audit report and gives you some perspective from the people here who try to carry out your directive in providing services to the, to the community. So the Management's Discussion and Analysis will have a lot of analytical data. It will give you some information about how the audit report is laid out. The financial statements have several sections. The first section of financial statements is, are called the government-wide statements. And they are prepared, sort of like a business with prepared financial statements. You've got a balance sheet that has all your assets minus your liabilities that comes down to an equity position. And those financial statements are prepared on the accrual basis, meaning that all of the receivables that were in place at your end and all the payables that were in place at your end should be captured on this financial statement on the balance sheet. Then the statement of, if there's one that I would like you to look at me, look at with me is on page 15, the statement of activities. Well, it actually starts on page 14. When the government-wide financial statements were added to governmental financial reporting, this was the primary concept that the, the GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, wanted to communicate. If you look at the way this statement of activities is laid out, your first column is expenses. You've got expenses broken down by functional category. Are you with me? The governmental activities, there's general government, public safety, environmental protection, economic and physical development, human services, cultural and recreational, educational, and then debt service. And then down below, you'll see the business-type activities, universal project, the waste disposal, and the water activities. So for all those services, then, you've got columns that show how those activities are funded. You've got the column of charges for services, operating grants and contributions, capital grants and contributions. And then you come down to a net expenditure that has to be funded by general revenue. And the most general revenue that we know are our tax revenues. That would be property tax revenues and sales tax revenues. So that was the message that they wanted to communicate when GASB switched to this format for government-wide. Okay, after page 15, then, you get into the information on the fund financial statements that you're used to looking at when you, as a governing body, go through the budgeting process. This, the fund financial statements are done on the modified accrual basis of accounting. And that basically is measuring money that's available to come in and spend for current resources. So it's more cash inflows and cash outflows, budgeting inflows and outflows kind of concept. On these statements, things like capital expenditures are shown as expenditures instead of as capital assets on the balance sheet. Debt service is shown as an expenditure and new debt is shown as a revenue source. So those are the primary differences between the government-wide financial statements on the full accrual basis and then the fund statements that are on modified accrual. There's a reconciliation between the modified accrual and the full accrual that's part of the first two fund statements. That concept only applies to governmental activities because the enterprise funds have the full accrual basis for both. But in the back of the financial statements, you will have the budgetary basis for the waste disposal fund, the water fund, and the universal fund. Okay, so I'm kind of jumping around a lot, but that's kind of the way the statements are laid out. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, so again, you had two basic changes this year. These financials are prepared under the uniform guidance. And the other change was that the, under GASB 73, which was a new accounting standard this year, the law enforcement officer special separation allowance, which used to be reported in a trust fund in the fund statements, is required to be incorporated into the general fund. And that's because the special separation allowance was not really a trust fund. It was just, you know, part of, a fund of the money that was held here. And since it wasn't held outside, which is what most units do, you know, the rules were that had to just be pulled back into the general fund. So that's, you can still account for it ever you want to, but it'll always be reported with the general fund going forward. So that was a change this year. So you'll see a prior period adjustment. You can see that on page 19, there's a restatement where the money that was in that little trust fund has now been pulled into the fund balance of the general fund. So when you're comparing to last year, those are the two things that you'll see that are different. Okay, so the audit results. Under the current reporting format, there's a schedule in the back that's called Schedule of Findings and Question Calls. It's called up, whether you have any findings or question costs, that's just the title of the, the statement that we're required to put in. And the purpose of this statement, it starts on page 145, and it summarizes the auditor results of the entire audit, the financial statement audit and the compliance audit. There are actually four audit reports in this report. The first one is the one I mentioned already that's in the front of the report, and that's your, our opinion on the financial statements section. And here you can see that, on the, the top line there, that that is unmodified, that there are no material weaknesses reported. Then the next section is federal awards. We have a report on the federal awards. And on that, we have to issue a, an opinion on your compliance with major federal programs. And that opinion is also unmodified, which is desired. And the same on the next page, you will see major state programs, the opinion is unmodified. They used to call that unqualified instead of unmodified, but then that was very confusing to people. They kind of felt that we were not saying we weren't qualified to issue it. So unmodified means that we didn't have to say except for a certain thing. All right, so that's where you can find your, the summary of all of your results of all of the, of the reports. I think that the, the letter that we just gave you also has the five-year history of the general fund fund balance. That's another thing that this board has always liked to monitor. There were a lot of years in the past where fund balance was a challenge, and you've been in a very healthy range for the last five years. Fund balance available for appropriation is 24% of general fund expenditures for 2016. And it's been hovering in that 24 to 26 range for the past five years. The state monitors that percentage, likes for it to be at least eight. And there were some years a long time ago that we couldn't get to eight. So this is really good news. So all in all, this is a very good audit report. And again, we can talk about whatever you want to talk about, but I don't have a lot more to say. Do you have anything you'd like to add, April?
Yeah.
The net change in fund balance, then, is we added another 338,000 to our fund balance, correct?
Yes. And you can see-
They made the percentage down, but we added two, I think.
And, you know, I talked about that a little bit in the letter that I handed out to you. The percentage will go down because of several factors. It can go down because of the composition of what makes up your fund balance. If you have a lot of receivables that weren't actually in hand as cash at, at the end of the year, then, you know, one year, the state was real late in paying those last DSS allocations. And, and that by itself made the percentage go down like four points or something. So those, those are things that, that can make an impact. Again, the, you look at your actual expenditures and transfers out to other funds and that you have to cover by the resources that you have that are spendable. And then you subtract from that number anything that was financed with installment loan proceeds. You don't do a lot of that. Some other organizations finance a lot more than you do here. So that'll bring their percentage up if they do that because they're, then, of course, they have to cover the debt service in the following year. So it, you know, all washes out. But that, so you take your expenditures and your transfers out minus what you paid for with installment proceeds. And then those are the, that's what you compare to what you have sitting in fund balance that is not restricted. If it's available for appropriation, even if it's a committed fund balance that, that can only be appropriated for a certain thing, it's still available for appropriation.
And our overall debt decreased by how much? How much do we have come off our debt, installment debt?
I think that you can find that in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. Let me see if I can put my hands on that real quick. Decreased by 1,778,000 because your debt payments were that much in excess of your new borrowings. And that just has to do with the strong purchase obligations.
And from the county perspective, you would say, it's fair to say that McDowell County maintains, based upon facts, a low debt level, correct?
Yeah.
And a healthy fund balance compared to counties around us?
Yes. The, I was trying to see where's the legal debt margin is one thing that's calculated, and it's somewhere in the financial statements where you, you actually look at the, the tax base that you have here and take a percentage of it, and that's the max that any county can borrow or any governmental unit can borrow. And you've, you've got lots of money there left in that, in that gap. Your debt, all the debt you have, including the pension obligations that have had to be put on your balance sheet in the last two years, that's, we talked about that last year, so I didn't really bring that up this year. But now on your balance sheet, on the government-wide, you have McDowell County's share of the state's retirement system obligation sitting on your, on your balance sheet. So those, those things will show up in your, in your debt service schedule, in your long-term debt schedule, but they don't count because, you know, you're not going to actually be paying those back out of obligations.
Okay, further comments, questions? There being none. What's the pleasure of the board concerning the document we have in our possession after we've heard the audit presented to the board?
I'll make a motion, we approve the audit and submit it to the North Carolina Treasurer's office.
Discussion. All is in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed, like sign. Thank you.
I did want to mention that it's already been accepted by the local government commission, but you do have to give it to the state.
Kathy, we appreciate your firm and April, your, your work and, and also our staff. Allison, let them know we appreciate the work you guys do. Because as Kathy stated, they're coming in and they set up shop for a certain amount of time and there's documents being, there's a lot of back and forth. So we appreciate both ends and how professional your firm is and our staff is.
We do make a mess. If you ever stop by while we're working on it, it looks pretty bad. Thank you so much.
Thanks, April. And Allison, too. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. We've got a 545 public hearing concerning a CDBG closeout project. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. About a year ago, the board authorized grant documents for a grant called the CDBG Commerce Fellows. And it's something that going back probably 18 months ago, that's something that we've wanted to do. Mr. Aberathie had, I learned a lot about it with his communications with the state and seemed like a great training program. And turned out it was. And so tonight, officially, we're closing out the grant and receiving comments, but also presented an opportunity for Mr. Conley, who was the beneficiary of the training funds, to give a report on his last year of periodic training he undertook at East Carolina University. So if it's okay for Mr. Conley to give his report, and I don't know if Laurie had anything, also had Laurie Powell from Western Piedmont Cog here, if we had any technical questions. But Mr. Conley has a report that I asked him to present to you to just talk about what he learned.
Okay, Mr. Conley. Floor's yours, sir.
Good evening. I'd first like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who made this possible for me and those who administered the grant for me. This, this program was the Commerce Fellows at ECU, which lasted from February 17th through December 7, 2016. The sessions were well structured and arranged, providing the information on many different topics of grant administration and public management. Each session was well organized and adhered to the syllabus. The speakers were a variety of extremely knowledgeable individuals from different aspects of grant writing and public management. They were all prepared and delivered their presentations in a professional manner. All speakers were involved in each session to evaluate each student and share past experiences on the subject at hand. Their willingness to answer questions and encourage group participation helped, helped to enhance the learning experience and correlate lectures to our individual locations of employment. There was about seven sections, seven sessions. And the first session focal points covered defining community leadership and grant writing, as you see on your memos. And there's a, the session was broke up to a morning session, afternoon session, where you can get, get a little bit in depth on what we've done throughout the day. The second session focal points were grant writing and public defining. And the third session's main focus was strategic planning. The fourth session focal points were project planning and feasibility assessment. The fifth session's focal points were communicating and identifying stakeholders. And the sixth session focused on budgeting. And I'm, I'm really thankful for having this opportunity to be able to do this because this is going to greatly help us and the county in the long run. And I really, really appreciate it. Also, I was awarded a certificate of completion and I was also awarded to, a plaque to the county as well, which read Community Partners 2016, McDowell County for Participation in the ECU/North Carolina Commerce Talent Enhancement Force Capacity Building Program. This, this is a symbolized to show partnership with East Carolina and their Commerce Board and North Carolina State Commerce. And that would be it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, Randall, we're sure you did outstanding job down there and you learned a lot. And you're going to bring that knowledge back to McDowell County and make this a better place for all the rest. That's right?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's great. Well, we're excited about the work you're doing. You're, you're doing a fine job with the county and, and learn. You're always learning. We learn every day. Life's a process of learning and, and never stop learning and apply that knowledge to help others. And that's what you're doing. So we appreciate that. Comments, questions for Randall from board members? Staff need to do that?
I lost a lot of grant money.
Yes, sir.
That's right. Laurie, anything you want to say? Laurie, we appreciate the partnership we've got with, with y'all. We were with Isothermal for many years.
We're still members, but they're helping out tremendously on our grants.
Yeah, so we appreciate what you're doing down there in your organization. And we appreciate it. With that being said, nobody has any other comments? At this time, I will declare the board into public hearing setting for comments from the public.
Make a motion and go out, public here. Second.
Discussion. I'll just further the motion, say aye? Aye, opposed, like sign. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention that Randall's doing a great job, and it's very important for us as an organization to invest in the training opportunities that come available. So, we're glad he could participate and bring that knowledge back. He's doing a lot with the McDowell Health Coalition. There's a West Marion Project he's assisting with, so it's already paying off.
Good.
Thank you for the support.
Okay. At this time, let's move to a- we have two economic development public hearings tonight. We have our economic development coordinator, Mr. Chuck Abernathy, who's no stranger to this board room. At this time, Chuck, if you'll come forward and Ashley lead us out, and then we'll turn it over to Chuck.
Sure. We're a little early, actually.
At this time, let's take a brief recess. After a brief recess, the McDowell County Board of Commissioners are back in session. At this time, we're on item E, the economic development concerning an economic project. And Mr. Wooten, go ahead and lead us out, sir. We have Mr. Abernathy with us. I'll say.
Just briefly, a hearing was advertised for 6:00 PM in the McDowell News. The incentive is stated, and I'm sure Mr. Abernathy will have a lot of detail or some detail that he can share right now, I should say, since it is competitive. That's all I've got from that. Pretty brief.
Thank you. It's good to be back. And congratulations on your audit. I always felt like the audit did not get the attention that it really deserves. It's really important, and that was a glowing report. I said this to a group of people, and some of you heard. I don't want to digress too much like I used to. But, education is clearly the thing that drives economic development. And a second congratulations to you guys. And something that I'm not sure is being fully understood is your award that you received from the State Association of Board of Educators on Board Commissioner of the Year Award. And that is a major accomplishment. And I'm not sure that it's been fully appreciated. And what you guys were doing, and Ashley is doing with teacher supplement and one-to-one, those things that will help make us competitive are very, very important. And man, I say it every chance I get because there's just too many people that it doesn't register with. So, congratulations. So, we have two public hearings on economic development projects. Economic development happens a lot of times with a lot of confidentiality involved. It also happens within the structure of the state of North Carolina and their requirements. And it's a moving process that changes. You've really got two options with how you go about processing these public hearings. And one would be, and some counties do this, they wait until the whole thing is over, they go into closed session, wait until the whole process is over, they hold their public hearing, and they approve what they heard in closed session. We never did that. Because what, in essence, it does is put the board in the situation of voting on something that it's already decided. What we've done is put the public hearing first with as much information as can be put out, put out. And that way, there's as much disclosure as we can give. If you ever want to change that or you want to do things different, that would certainly be your prerogative. So, the general statutes govern the process and do say that a public hearing is required and that the public is offered the opportunity to make comment. The first one is a small project that we've been working on, manufacturing project. So, it's a new company location, which will go into an existing building. 22 new jobs will be created, and a little over $1 million in investment will be made by the company. What the county has done is really looked at incentives, which are permissible, using two different- there's really two different things to consider. One are new jobs, and one is the investment that's made. When our unemployment rate was 15% or 16%, we shifted real hard to an emphasis on jobs. As the unemployment rate lowers, maybe you shift more to an investment consideration. 22 new jobs at $3,000 a job, which is what we've always done. We've done that for years. And again, sometimes we'll switch if it's a heavy investment situation, which this one is not. Would be a $66,000 incentive that would be paid over three years. So, the public has afforded the opportunity to comment on that. Contract is entered into with the company. You guys have got a commissioner on the Economic Development Board. Ashley sits on that as well. Contract is entered into. The company must perform first prior to an incentive being paid. And what we do sometimes for budgeting purposes, let's say all 22 jobs are created right up front. We will still break that out typically. There's a negotiation process with it. Three years is the standard. We'll break that typically into equal increments. The jobs have to be created, but just because all of the jobs are created right up front doesn't mean the full amount's paid up front. So, the idea would be the 66 broken out over three years. Questions?
Okay. At this time, I will declare the board in a public hearing, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. Does anybody present wish to comment on what we've heard tonight? If you do, just stand up, state your name, and we'll receive the comment.
Let's go up, public here. Second.
Okay? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, like sign. Ladies and gentlemen, we've got the information before us. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we approve the incentive of $66,000 for the 22 positions. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, mostly aye. Aye, opposed, like sign. Okay? Mr. Serment, go right ahead.
Do you think we're okay introducing the topic and holding your public hearing at 6:15?
Let's introduce, then we'll hold it at 6:15.
Okay. Is that all right? Second one is more interesting and more exciting as far as the potential. Advertised at 90 new jobs. The average wage on these exceeded $50,000. $7.4 million in investment. Both numbers, as we were working on this, were, have been stated informally quite a bit higher. And so, this is the number that we've, or that we were apparently zeroed in on, and it's changing again. It's an existing company that is looking to expand and basically kind of cement their position here in McDowell County as an employer, great-paying jobs. Investment number is going to be higher, but that's the number that we're, we've been permitted to put out. This morning, the jobs have been expressed in terms of 50 jobs, 90 jobs, and 150 jobs. And this morning, they switched it from 90 to 150 new jobs. But then, they said that it was not approved all the way through the organization. In other words, that's the number that was most likely, but it was still not final. Now, that may be, Leon, you're new, that may be frustrating, but it's really the way that the process works. It's fluid, it changes, and there's a lot of considerations that go into what a company wants put out and what they don't. And all I know to do is to be respectful of that. So, what we've got is really, I don't know that it would go below 90, back to 50, which is where we started. There was a reason it was at 50. It's because there's two state grants that are involved in this, one of which is a building, what's called a building reuse grant, which would be for half a million dollars of state money. And then, there will be a one North Carolina grant, which is fluid. Still not sure what the number will be, but it will exceed a million. So, you're looking at something close. When you put the training dollars in that the community college will receive, you're looking at something that will be bumping $2 million in state and local dollars. This is a really big deal. It might be the biggest deal that you'll see this year. Hopefully not, but it may be. This is a big deal. We've been working on this, I don't know, maybe five months, six months. So, what I need, because this is- and here's the fun thing about both of these projects. And I said this to Ashley a little while ago, or at least I think I did. You, sometimes you come in here and you present these, and you really don't know. Well, you never know if the project is going to land or not, but sometimes there's more question than other times. And both of these appear highly, highly, highly likely to occur. Documents are being finalized, they're being signed, their plans. I mean, there's things really moving that indicate that both of these are happening and that both will happen in the month of February. And there's reasons for that. And you guys can, you know, probably surmise some of it. Some of it is budgeting in relationship to the state. So, a real strong likelihood of both of these happen. So, we're kind of in a time quandary where I've got to have authorization to match what the state is doing, but I'm not sure what the state is doing because we're not sure exactly what the company is doing. And that's just the reality of what we're into. So, really, what's needed is authorization to sign documents that could go up to 150 jobs. And we're still a couple of minutes before quarter after. Any questions?
So, we're looking at the possibility of 172 new jobs in McDowell County. What's the average, Chuck? I know that the days of a company coming in with 500, 600 jobs are very, very- It's very, it's about going away, right? What would the state consider a company coming to an area and the number of jobs there starting with? What would be a prediction?
It's a good question. And they've lowered because of what you just said. The expectations have all lowered. There's a state incentive called the Jobs Development Investment Grant, which is kind of the Cadillac of state incentive programs. They now put that at about 150 to 175 jobs. This just about qualified for that kind of project. Years ago, 150 jobs would not have qualified. The Kobea Project was a J Dig, and I believe it was like 250 jobs. So, that number is lower. You're right. The projects now, when I'm looking back over the last year, we've had one or two, maybe three, real, real large projects that was more than a tire kicker, you know, that kind of looked, but they're just not as frequent. Maybe that'll change. Maybe we'll see more of those.
Chuck, give us the percentage of the workforce that was involved in manufacturing textiles and furniture in McDowell County. When that all went south and left?
Yeah.
Were we up Houston State or third Houston State?
Well, we still are. Yeah, we're still, but the percentage has- There was a time in my life career where we were one of the top 25 counties in the nation. With 3,500 counties, we were one of the- I mean, we were one of the highest- We were somewhere around 70% of the workforce. We're now, don't, if you, the newspaper quotes, I might be off a little bit, but it's going to be around 40% of our workforce is employed in manufacturing. Our workforce is around, again, if you quote me, I may be off a little bit, but around 21,000 as a workforce. So, adding 175 jobs is almost a percent of your, on your unemployment rate. Now, what will happen is a lot of people will come in from other counties and work those jobs. This is, I mean, it's January, and I think 2017's going to be quite a year.
Chuck, I did look at those numbers. You know, it's been some time ago, so if I'm wrong, I'm sure I'll be quoted on it. But, anyway, I think back in the '70s, I think there was over 15,000 manufacturing jobs here in this county then. There was over 2,000 manufacturing jobs in the city limits of Old Ford at that time.
Yeah.
And that was big back then.
Yeah. Yeah. We're third in the state as a percentage. Again, I didn't come in prepared, but the state is going to be around 13% or 14%. And the nation is going to be less than that, say about 11%. And we're three or four times the state and national average. So, you know, diversification may be something that's as important, you know, as adding additional manufacturing jobs, trying to add different types of jobs.
And that's occurred over a process of time, hasn't it?
That's why our percentage has gone down.
We've got the lowest unemployment rate of any county that adjoins us, minus Bunkham County, which has the lowest in the state.
Right.
So, there's a lot of partners working together that we can attribute the success to, I would say, from the college to the manufacturing sector and the board. At this time, I will declare the board in a public hearing setting, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. We're here to receive comment concerning an economic development project that we discussed. Is there anyone present in the room who wishes to call me at this time? If so, stand up, state your name, and the floor's yours.
Motion, go out of public here. Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign. Okay? Did you want to speak?
My name is Jacob Blair. I was just wondering, what is, you said the-
At this time, we'll go back into a public hearing setting to receive comment pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. All right?
My name's Jacob Blair. I was just wondering what the- We are definitely one of the highest rated in the state for manufacturing. That's correct, correct? Like, what'd you say, like third?
Yes. That's correct.
Third? Okay. And this is slated to only increase, whereas that doesn't seem to be the case with any of our neighbors.
You mean their percentage is quite a bit lower?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And they're not making any attempts to-
Oh, sure they are. Everybody's working, I promise you. Everybody's working real hard, including our neighbors.
And that's why you got, one thing is, Jacob, that's why you got to have a board that's proactive and a group of people because economic incentives we're talking about tonight- proactive and a group of people, because economic incentives we're talking about tonight, you've got to be able to entice, because we're competing against the world, against 49 other states and then 99 other counties. So, you've got to have a group of elected officials that recognize the need to provide diverse opportunities in the workforce for their people, and as a result, they're going to put stuff in place that's going to try to make that happen. And, and this board, since I've been on it, we've always sought to be that kind of a board. We had a terrible, terrible rate. What was one came on check?
One of the highest in the state.
In the state, one of the highest in the state. Our firm else is 1.5%. And, and through a lot of different things, the boards, members of the boards have worked together, and that's been reduced. So, diversity is the key, and cooperation is another major thing you've got to have within the county. And some, some counties don't have that. You've got groups that are fussing and fighting against each other, they're, they're after the glory and, and the name. Our board's not trying to make headlines, we're just going to work day in, day out with our, our partners and our leadership to try to make things happen. I mean, if we get the headlines, we're not after that. We want to, we want to make sure that you and your family, your kids, grandkids, your elders have job opportunities here in McDowell County to provide and, and enjoy your life here.
Most, most of your jobs come from your existing companies. The percentage used to be 70%. I'm not sure if that still holds or not, but that's, that's really where your jobs come from. Lynn, you may be hearing this for the first time, Mr. Green, this board treats existing company expansions like they do new company locations. So, there's not a, not a distinction made between the two. What's interesting, and I should have said this, when an existing company is expanding, like take earlier last year, Bowdor expanded. They added about 40 jobs and added 80,000 square feet of building onto the back of their, of their facility. That was a competitive project. It wasn't incentivized based on the fact that the company said, well, we're doing it, where's our money? No, that's not how it works. If that's what's happening, then, then no one comes to the, to the plate. There's a competitive process where Bowdor looked within their 30 plants nationwide at where to put that, and it was truly a competitive process. And I promise you, the one that you just had the public hearing on is, is exactly the same thing. That thing can go somewhere else, and the state verifies that that's the case.
You know, we saw that during the KOBIA, those 250 jobs, almost at the midnight hour, another state tried to come in behind us and say stab us in the back, that's basically what it was. You know, and I'll, I'll never forget that, that they were trying to sneak in the back door, and it didn't happen. Was able to land that company, of course, downturn, economic downturn hit, you know, it was just, it was amazing to see that, because I didn't realize before I came on the board, all that went on like that. But it's a very, very competitive market.
It's a different, it's, it's different from what normally comes in here, and you guys have to deal with.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a real interesting thing.
Kind of tying in on your statement, the other counties, I had a guy down at a small business center, Dean Knapp, came in out of Asheville, everybody brags about Asheville, you know, and he said that he had left a meeting over there, and he said, we've never seen a county, you've heard me say this, Chuck, more aggressive on economic development than what McDowell County is. And that came from a meeting of directors, small business directors and things in Asheville. We were going after them, even Burke County, you know, they, there, there's times, you know, Burke County's double our size, and they're, they're not moving, they're not moving. I mean, yeah, they'll get some things coming in, but...
You've got one public hearing open from last year, where, if you remember, it's the company that is looking at locating in the Universal Building in the back. He came by today, and it's still, we're still working with him, still trying to, trying to, to get that fully processed. And then you approved another company called American Plastics, who I was also with today, that is locating in the Universal Building on the far west side, in the cafeteria area. And he'll be moving equipment in, still got things that we're doing there, but in a month. So, it's something...
It'd be safe to say, Chuck, I think you would agree with this, that if things work out the way we're seeing that, that it looks like they're going to, and the percentage is pretty high that these things will come, come to pass, that we're looking at 200 jobs in this county.
Know that, that my tendency would be not to overstate something and to be careful.
Yeah.
And, and I really believe both of these are happening.
We just have to put people in those jobs. We've got to get out there to high school and to college and say, look, beat the bushes and say, get out and get a job.
For your school and college, you guys.
Partner, okay. Is that it? Anybody else wish to comment? Okay?
Motion, go out of public hearing.
Second. All the favors say aye? Aye, any opposed, light sign. Okay, Jim, what's the pleasure, board, concerning the project?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go into an agreement, incentive agreement at $3,000 a job for whatever economic development works out.
Second to the motion. Discussion, all those in favor say aye? Aye, any opposed, light sign. Okay? Thank you, Jim. And now, last two items on our agenda, we have the 2016 year in review. Our county manager will go ahead, and he's got a presentation concerning this past year and, and accomplishments this board has done working together. So, Ms. Wooton, floor is yours.
While we wait on the PowerPoint projector to, to warm up, just, we want to take the opportunity to tutor on horn, I guess. At the end of the year, you see a lot of, you know, top 10 lists or recaps or whatever, and we've done that, we've done a good job of that in the past for annual reports. And so, what we've done is put together a PowerPoint, just some of the highlights and some different areas, and then we'll take this information. And if you remember, a little over a year ago, we did one that was very nice, that we could hand out to visiting folks and constituents and what have you. So, we'll put this, a lot of this same information, pictures, et cetera, in a pamphlet that can be handed out. But I, I won't take an hour of your time, I promise, but I just wanted to highlight some of these things so you can be reminded and the public, of course, too. So, Mr. Abernathy talked about it, the number one priority for this board, maybe a tie for first, economic development is public education. Some of the highlights for this year that you worked on, a big one was obviously the teacher supplements. You budgeted 84 additional, 84,000 additional dollars over last year. With that funding, the school board was able to increase their local supplements, and you've committed to do another three years beyond that to get a matching range with our neighbors. So, a really big deal, as Mr. Abernathy mentioned, having quality teachers in our schools that can have a quality education. Without that, we wouldn't have these public hearings, a great deal. And again, the, the presentation that was made in Greensboro from the School Board Association statewide group, yeah, that, maybe 20 years ago was the last time this board commissioners were recognized. So, really big deal for the supplements. And so, it's just, it needs to be stated that there's a great partnership here. And Mr. Garrett wanted to mention the supplements, the monthly meetings, which is on here, keeping the funding level where it needed to be during the recession, where a lot of surrounding counties were cutting their funding to schools. The board here and staff were able to keep that funding level. And so, that was obviously greatly appreciated, and it went into the nomination. McDowell Tech, another great relationship with that board. We did a tour with them a couple of months ago. You're continuing to invest in the Universal Center, which is greatly appreciated by them and by Mr. Abernathy, I'm sure. And so, you learned a little bit about what they have in mind for future on-campus projects. And so, that cooperation doesn't always exist statewide. And so, I just mentioned, you continue to meet, and sometimes the public may not appreciate that or understand it, but two of you, again, meet with representatives of the school system and the college monthly and just talk about issues of concern. And that's something that, again, I've heard from representatives from the school system and the community college that's pretty rare and should be in every, all 100 counties. It's just almost common sense. Economic development, again, Mr. Abernathy, I mentioned you held several public hearings last year that have produced results. One of those he mentioned is still looking at a space in the Universal Center, and so hopefully that will be a success for this year. And obviously, a great relationship with MEDA for what they do for the county. I had representatives from the Economic Development Partnership here right before Christmas, and just the, the positive things he was saying about our county and the relationships that we all have and the hard work that MEDA and Mr. Abernathy do was, it was evident that he doesn't always see that in all the counties he goes into. The public may not recognize, if they go to Zaxby's, that this organization had a role in that, granted an easement, which sounds like a small thing, but in a larger municipality or county, that might have been a big deal to them to say, well, maybe we don't want to do that, that's a fast food restaurant. I think that was probably like 16 months ago when that was granted, there was no discussion about not doing it. It was very positive, and that business is doing well, in part because of that, that easement allows for folks to get in there and support the business. Little bit different as far as economic development, there's been an effort for, gosh, five, 10 years at least, to increase broadband availability in the county. You and prior boards have supported the one-to-one initiative through the school system, which I could have put up there, which gets a laptop in every high school student's hands that they can take home, and every middle schooler's hands that they use in the school system. And so, there's been an effort to want to have broadband availability for those high schoolers when they're at home doing their homework and research. And so, we've tried and tried and tried with our existing providers, and we've had some successes, but we're starting to look outside the box with providers like Skyrunner of Asheville, who is a wireless provider. Spoke to someone today about possibly signing up for them. So, they are, through the cooperation of MEDA, Chamber, the county, a couple of other partners, and Appalachian Regional Commission, we were able to get a grant to do four more tower sites with Skyrunner. And so, it's just an innovative cooperative project, project, so to get more of the county covered. So, it's a little bit different than what you would think of traditional economic development, but it's another way to get, get broadband in the home. I mentioned Universal, the building is slam-packed with private industry. We've got the former Morgan and Pressural Vessel space that I know Chuck, Mr. Abernathy, myself are confident will be filled this year. And so, at that point, you start thinking about, okay, maybe it's time to expand. And so, maybe be looking at that in 2017, so who knows? But for the businesses there, I should point out, it's, it presents them a great opportunity to be close to the community college with the skills center right there, Advanced Manufacturing Center. And so, having that, those folks next door just helps those partnerships. You invested in some county facilities, again, going back about 18 months or so, you authorized construction in the courthouse. We had a public unveiling of the elevator this past summer. I was going to put the picture in, but it didn't turn out too great for to put up on the screen, but a great recognition of doing that. You did some enhancements in the Superior courtroom, the District courtroom, and also some safety enhancements. You added some security cells, so when inmates are brought into the District Court, there's actually some cells that they can be held in while they're, they're waiting for their time and improve the security otherwise. But the law enforcement center is, has been expanded to add more female beds, so that was greatly needed. Have been sending out female inmates to other counties at a great cost, so this is a great enhancement for us. And looking forward, you authorize Holland and Hamrick Architects to make some recommendations on additional enhancements for the courthouse. So, we've talked about doing new windows, in conjunction with that, doing a modern heating and air system. We have a very adequate boiler right now, but we'd like to have a little more modern system, and obviously some, some better air conditioning for some of our offices up there. As part of that, we're studying the feasibility of adding a third courtroom. We've looked at the parking deck, if it can support, and we're still waiting on the results from that test right now. Few more other things I mentioned, we've, we've put a lot of roofs on buildings this year, HVAC units, and that's just, shouldn't be overlooked, it's just sometimes expensive maintenance, but we want to keep these buildings for a long time, so you have to invest in them. And we also mentioned this last month, we paved the final two convenience center sites. Crooked Creek, I think, had been, I think, promised to pave for a long time, and Final was able to secure that property, buy it about two years ago, and then pave it and improve it. Dodger's Field site, honestly, didn't have a lot of traffic until the last three or four years, and that's a growing community. And so, we've had a lot more influx of folks in that area, and so, it just, it was time. Emergency services. Mr. Keller's been in here numerous times to ask for authorization for new grants, new programs, and one of those is the Community Care Paramedic Program. They have been recognized on a statewide level and a national level for that innovation, able to do that through KBR Reynolds assistance. It's a great way to communicate with those frequent flyers for patients that in the past have been frequent users of the EMS system, and the early results have been very positive. This is more of a one-on-one relationship with the paramedic, and they can say, you know, Mr. Smith, how are you doing? Are you taking your meds? Have you been to the doctor? And it's cut down tremendously on cost for Medicare, Medicaid, and for county dollars. Through the KBR, we're able to add a second paramedic and a second vehicle, so it's just going to double that response. And again, sometimes we overlook the things we do every year, but we buy an ambulance just about every year, and my mother lives in the county, they haven't bought one in about 25 years. So, you hear stories like that, and it's just hard to imagine how they're, they're not doing an investment, but you do that every year. We do that with sheriff's vehicles as well. And so, that, let's not forget about the, maybe somewhat routine things that you do. We have a great trained staff, and when we're able and can let them go out and help others in need, it's something we want to do, because we might need assistance as well. A lot of our, well, not a lot, but quite a few of our staff went down east in the aftermath of Hurricane Matthew. They provided assistance for about a week, and when you have that type of flooding or any type of natural disaster, sometimes people just, they need to sleep, they need to eat every once in a while, and you're just overwhelmed. So, having extra staff from the west and other places to go in and help is greatly appreciated. And so, we always hear positive comments back. The county manager down there was just very complimentary of our staff and had a great time having them there. Mentioned Universal, have the Advanced Manufacturing Center, have the private employers, but we also have a small area there that you set aside for the backup 911 center. This is a state mandate that all counties have, have to have a back... counties have, have to have a backup center. And so, some were looking at other counties, some were, you know, scrambling essentially, but we had a plan for several years to dedicate some unused space there for a backup 911 center. And so, all the capabilities that are up here on Main Street will be down there. In the event something happens to that center, heaven forbid, so it'll be, you know, the same equipment, same capability. Public infrastructure, I know Mr. Abernathy said years ago, we always wanna be talking about putting pipe in the ground at every meeting. And I didn't have that on there, 'cause I knew we were gonna talk about what we've been doing. Had a groundbreaking back in, I believe, September for the Harmony Grove Road Line. The project is essentially complete. They're doing a few more taps. You've got numerous businesses out at the Exit 90 area that are gonna benefit from this. Some have been hamstrung, that they couldn't add more jobs because of their poor quality wells. So, this is gonna make a tremendous impact for them, as well as the property that there, that's there that could be developed or redeveloped. So, you had some partnerships there. U.S. Forest Service provided funding, Appalachian Regional Commission. So, we made a very good case to those funders why they should participate. So, Thursday night, Mr. Harmon and myself were at McDowell Tech at the public hearing for reclassification of Lake James, which, to my opinion, went very well. Very positive comments from the public that were supportive. Some clarifying questions, but overall supportive of the project. That is, I told the public there, that is a very long-term project. We've been working on it for a long time, and it'll take a long time for there to be an intake and the treatment plant. It's just the nature of it. There's a lot of permitting, a lot of cost that has to go into it, but it's something that we've kept going for years and years. And without your support, we couldn't do it. But where that is right now, we had the public hearing. They're receiving written comments now, and then in the spring, they will have the Environmental Management Commission will review that. And potentially, once it works for the bureaucracy, could be in effect in the summertime. So, just a really big deal. And again, a lot of this stuff happens in the background, and we mention it here once a month, but a lot of work is going into a lot of these projects that sometimes the public doesn't appreciate. And not a, not as big a deal as the Harmony Grove Road Line, but we have finished a water line to serve Universal. And so, we had a well there. It was perfectly okay for the time being, but the state said, "You really need to have a public water supply here." And so, the city worked with us to make that happen. We had several grants to help out with it. A great project turned out. A few employee initiatives. Mr. Walker mentioned earlier, Chairman Walker, that the backbone of this organization is our employees. He did a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. The personnel handbook was revised and maybe modernized. It was great to start off with, but there was a few tweaks that we had to make. And then, the wellness program, this is something for 2017, we're going to really take a look at with our workforce wellness program that's underway. To get him to come in, there's a staff person with that program through the Health Coalition, to look at the program, see what's working, what's not working, how it can be enhanced to get more employees participating, to get healthier outcomes for everybody. But it's, it's made a good impact now, that we think it, with that enhancement that's going on, will be even better. And getting towards the end, outdoor recreation environment. It's been a year you authorized looking at and trying to recruit public shooting range for the county. And so, since that time, we have submitted several sites that we thought were potentially great for shooting range. And sometimes they weren't great, sometimes they were, but there were all kinds of issues related to them. But we continue to communicate with the state. We've met with the federal government representatives, and there's been communication with elected officials in the federal and state level to say, "Hello, we're still interested in this. You have a very interested board and a community that wants this to happen here." And so, we're hopeful that will maybe, maybe by the end of 2017, we'll have at least a groundbreaking, if not a ribbon-cutting for that. We continue to work on trails and greenways. We have Phase Three of the greenway that should start this year. You might hear from, hear proposal next month of an organization that would essentially take that to the next level. So, a couple of months ago, and that, I don't have it up there, but you authorized the endorsement of the Font de Flora State Trail. And you may have seen in the local papers that that has been, made a statewide designation. So, any future segments that this board participates in or otherwise will be in that state system, which is great. And continuing on the environment, the planning board graciously worked on enhancements to the Lake James Protection Ordinance at your direction. They brought back some tweaks here and there that will add to the water quality protection setbacks, setbacks, et cetera, that will make Lake James an even better place than it is right now. So, sometimes it's, when you have a process like that, it can be difficult. But I know Mr. Harmon and the planning board did a great job working with the public, hearing their concerns, and then bringing a great document back to you. And then, related to Forest Service, we had, the U.S. Forest Service is going through a forest plan revision, and Nicholas Larson, the district ranger, has been before you a couple of times. And you've expressed your concerns and reservations about some parts of the plan, and so, they have taken that back, and they're definitely communicating that with their administrator. So, you wanna make sure that forest is protected, but not at the expense of public access and fire access and different necessary reasons. Hunting, maybe, so. That's all I had. I tried to cram as much as I could in 12 months in about 15 minutes or so, but like I said, we will get this in a document that can be handed out for the public distribution. We'll put it on our website. But every year, we need to do this. Just, it's not necessarily bragging when it's, somebody said, "It's not bragging if it's the truth." So, these are things that you guys have supported, and you gentlemen, and it's important for you to, to highlight it.
It's very important to recap the accomplishments this board with other people. Other boards have done, been partners with us in groups and, and so, I think it's very important to the board. It semens the fact that during the course of a year's time, worked bad to maybe forget some things, but that just brings that document. It's a great document for the public to look at. If they've got questions, they can look at that, too, and it will be on our website.
Yes, sir.
All right, comments, questions? There being none, at this time, we have since the comment, the last item on our agenda for tonight. I see no one has signed up to comment. Is anyone present who wishes to comment? Okay, there being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Question adjourned.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye and you oppose, light sign. Meeting is adjourned.